Oops, I didn't spell correctly. At BG Club? I was, I met with Extension on Friday. That's what, I didn't know if you were on vacation or...
Yeah, but...
That's fine, but it was, um... Dean Isley is now the new Director of Extension, but it was Katie's last day before she was moving on up to, she's headed up to Michigan State. So, I wanted to try to get that done before she was out of the picture so that we could have hopefully a relatively smooth transition and Katie could talk through the budget while Dean was kind of in present. Nothing too big, yeah, so I met, we met up in Bob's office, but I just wanted to give you that update on, on what was going on. Good morning, everyone. The time has come. I'm going to call our August 9th council meeting to order. If you would, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is our auditor's financial report. Bob?
Okay. We began 2022 with a general fund cash balance of fifteen million eight hundred and twenty-three thousand six hundred and eleven dollars with projected miscellaneous revenue and the property tax levy. And deducting the circuit breakers, our total funds available were sixty-eight million six hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars. We deduct the encumbrances, the 22 budget and the minimum balance to council and add back in an estimated 2% unused budget. Our beginning balance for the general fund was three million nine hundred and ninety thousand twenty-nine dollars when the year started. We've done additional appropriations of fifty thousand four hundred and seven dollars so far this year. There are fifty-nine twenty-nine in requests for this meeting. And we deduct the miscellaneous expenditures. Our total funds available as of right now, three million nine hundred and six thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Next, on the, the revenue report, I just have a couple little things to mention. I don't have much details on those, but building permits in 0301, we had a really jumbo month. And there was a hundred and nine thousand dollars for the month. You know, we had like four hundred thousand dollars for the year. It was one really big year. We, we don't get the details of where those come from, but there was a lot of permits for, for the month of July. So, we are at seventy-eight percent there. Moving down to 0411, inmate housing. Once a year, we receive money from the state for the felony six prisoners. And so, that's where we have five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars for the month brought in. So, that's put us over what we had estimated for, for the whole year. I think those are the only things I had on the, on the revenue side. Again, to the fund balances, the general fund, of course, we just did property tax distribution in, in a month ago. So, we still have a nice sized balance of thirteen point eight million dollars. And you, and you can see most months, we overspend what we bring in because property taxes are, just come in twice a month. So, moving down a little bit to eleven eighty-six. And I'll mention something about this later when I get through the fund balances. The rainy day fund, there was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars put into that fund and that was money that was left over from the jail lease funds. And so, we put that money into there by statute. It says it has to go to the general fund or the rainy day fund. So, that was placed in there. Moving down a page or so to six, or four, six, two, one. And that's the, the bot fund. In this one, you see now we have a negative balance of a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. This is the one payment we have in 2022. This is a property tax supported fund. So, we don't have the cash to pay it out of that fund. And when we get to the end of the year, we won't have any more payments, but we will have, you know, approximately another, well, more than enough to, to get that into the positive. But, I'll cover this again here in just a second. The health insurance fund, forty-seven ten. We did receive more in receipts than what we, we paid out in, in claims. So, we're getting close to about the high watermark that we've ever had in that fund at seven point, or nine point eight million dollars. That was the only thing I had on that one, or on the funds. And moving down, I don't think that I put this next little slide in the packet, but up on the screen, this, this goes back, this is my 22 budget hearing display. And to show you, and maybe I didn't do this exactly right, but, and for 2022 budget, we put in a request for six hundred and fifty-two thousand, which was what we needed to, to spend in, in '22. And then I had put in a levy of one point five million. The state then cut that to seven hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's where we're kind of running into the, the situation. And what the state is telling me now, I should have put in a budget for what was due in '22 and then the next payment is due February of '23. And that never crossed my mind to put any budget in for '22 that we'd be paying in '23. But that did kind of cause our negative balance. And we would kind of continue having this negative unless we do something to move money into that bot fund. And that's where, back in that rainy day fund, I think it was eleven eighty-six. Oops. My plan is next month to ask for an appropriation and move this hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars plus some more to get down into the, the bot fund so that we can get that thing to above negative when the year, or when they, when we're looking at it right now. So, I would need a little bit more than that if I'm going to get enough for the entire payment. But I just wanted to share that with you now that that was something that's going to be coming up. We did, do have at least half of the money that we put in there. I think we have a little bit more money that we have in, in other spots, all from, from the jail lease leftover money. But this was just something that maybe I should have. And now for, for '23, I do have the payment for, the first payment in '24 included in there. So, I think we're gonna, we're gonna get onto the right track now, but we are a little bit short. As of right now, we're showing the negative in, in that fund. So, I think that's, that's all I have, if there's any questions.
Any questions for Bob?
Uh, Bob, forty-seven ten, the county self-insurance?
Yes.
How much has dropped in there every month?
Well, it depends on, um...
Approximately?
Let me, I'll show you here. Sometimes when I go from upstairs to here.
What are we shooting for, twenty million?
Well, we're, we just, we haven't raised the insurance rates for, um, I don't know, since 2016. And so, you know, and so, we're just paying it out there based on our claims because we're self-insured.
Right.
So, from down here, if you, on the screen here, that's not where I need to be looking. We're putting close to a million dollars a month into that.
Right.
So, you can go through it pretty quick if, if the tide would really, really turn, but we've been very fortunate and I think we'd be able to stick with the same rates again next year, too. Now, we just kind of think eventually the claims are going to catch up and surpass our revenue and then things will be going down, but...
But we hope not.
Yeah, right, we hope not.
I just think it's kind of high, that's all. I mean, I mean, you know, anything could happen. I mean, tornado could wipe this building out this afternoon.
It is, but when, if you start decreasing the insurance rates that we're charging the county and charging the employees, that can be a little slippery slope, too, that we just kind of figure over time, the, the cost is going to go up and...
I'm sure we'll...
So, it's, it's a good problem to have.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll address it again sometime.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Bob? Hearing none, our treasurer's report. Good morning, Jennifer.
Well, the Fed Funds Rate increased again. So, for the month of July, our average rate was just under 2%. And for August, we should see a rate of about 2.6 at our primary bank because the Fed Funds Target is up to 2.5%. So, for the month of July, then, we had total interest earned of two hundred and sixty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and one cent. Nothing new to report as far as investments or, or banking situation, although Stiefel did pay out well in investments for the month of July. On the next page, you can see between the bank accounts and the investments, how that Fed Funds Rate is really affecting the interest earnings on those bank accounts for the overnight rate. Interest from investments, because those are more fixed, are right in line with where they have been for 2021. And I'll get to a page where I can show you where we're at with investing and, and how open we are for the long term. Next page, on the distribution of the interest. So, right now, the general fund is sitting at a total of six hundred and thirty-two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five for the year so far. And that's out of nine hundred and forty-six thousand, about one hundred and seventy. So, the revised budget that I was thinking for the general fund was up to seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand and we are surpassing where we think we would be with that. And again, they've done two, three-quarter of a percent hikes, which I kind of thought would be like a half a percent hike. So, interest will definitely come in higher than what I budgeted there. And I'll be looking, as you go into budget hearings, how to estimate based on the most recent news for next year for you. So, that next page is something I don't normally include in this report, but I just wanted to show you kind of our position. We're allowed to invest in a two to five-year period for long-term. And so, this is about as good of a bell-shaped ladder curve that you could have for investments, which is what we should be aiming for. So, as soon as rates start increasing out further in like the 2027 year, that's where we would be putting some money rather than keeping it short-term. But so far, short-term rates have been the highest, so that's where we have kept the majority of the money. That's really all I have on the report itself. If there are any questions about anything there?
Any questions for Jennifer?
The last page is just something that, you know, as you go into budget hearings, the treasurer's office is kind of a small budget relative to all others and isn't always a priority discussion. But this being my last year in the treasurer's office and having a budget, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the efficiency of the office. This is kind of an org chart that shows our controls and checks and balances. And I've, I've just enjoyed being in that office and look forward to next year and wanted to kind of not take up time at budget hearings, but just to let you know some about the office before you get there.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is any public comment concerning any agenda items before us this morning? Hearing none, we have our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from our July meeting and several transfers. Do I have any items that need to be removed or do I have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have additional appropriations. First up is Superior Court seven.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve additional appropriations from the general fund in, in the amount of three thousand dollars for Superior Court seven as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the additional appropriation in the general fund for Superior Court seven. And, yeah, yeah, it should be thirty-two thirty if you refer to the sheet. Because there's two hundred and thirty for the social security.
Do I need to amend it?
Well, or, yeah, if you want to just...
For thirty-two thirty amended.
Is that okay with you, Jody?
Yes.
Okay, we have a corrected balance or, or amount on that appropriation. Judge, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I just, if you had any questions. I have a court reporter that is going to be taking maternity leave. I have spoken with the other courts. We're hopeful that I won't need to tap into it, that we can move people around to cover. I just didn't want to end up in a situation midway through where that wasn't possible. I've arranged for Donna Runkle, who is a prior court reporter that also did the same function in four, to cover if I need her. So, I mean, my, you know, assertion to you is I'm going to do my best to avoid using the money and hopefully not need it, but I didn't want to be in a position where I needed coverage that I couldn't provide, which is why I made the request.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. We also have...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. We also have a salary statement for that part-time position. Do you want to put that...
Yeah, this kind of slipped through the cracks and didn't get put into the packet, but it was submitted. And this is for a maximum rate of twenty dollars an hour, which is the same. He's also requested that for, for '23 as well.
And that, that '23 will get removed. I, I, when I was communicating to my staff, it got miscommunicated. I didn't need it for next year, I just needed it for this temporary thing. So, the, the request will not be something that's proceeding year to year. This is just a temporary issue.
So, it's just... We probably, for '23, we would probably have them approve it so that if you did need it, you could just transfer money down if you did have some excess somewhere else, we wouldn't have to do this again, so...
Yeah, and I'm meeting with them on Friday, so we'll get everything in line there.
Okay. All right, any other, do I have a motion, I guess, to approve the salary statement?
I have a motion to approve the salary statement as presented.
Second?
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton to approve the salary statement as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have additional appropriation for the sheriff.
I'll make a motion, we approve additional appropriation out of General Fund 1,000 for the sheriff in the amount of two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the additional appropriation for the sheriff's department in the amount of two thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars for training. Terry, do you want to add any additional comments?
So, yeah, this twenty-six ninety-nine was part of the money that was originally given to us in our training budget at the beginning of the year. And we have six different instances where our deputies put in for training to go to. One was in February and that got canceled due to a snow event. We received, we paid that amount and we received the money back, went to the general fund. We had two officers that were, had paid for to go to training. And then they received subpoenas to testify in court. Well, they had to cancel that training to be in court. We received that money back. And we had a couple others that we had paid for and they were canceled because there weren't enough people signed up for the training. And we were giving those expenditures back. So, we were just requesting to get that amount of money that we paid, we got back, went back to the general fund to get it back to use for training.
Okay. Any comments or questions from council? Thanks for that explanation. If there are no comments or questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Thank you. Next, we have appropriation from EDIT for the surveyor.
Mr. President, I move that we place Economic Development Income Tax Fund 1,112 on the table, Phase Two Stormwater Quality.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the additional appropriation for EDIT Fund 1112 in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the surveyor. Discussion?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Zach Beasley, County Surveyor. I'm actually here this morning wearing the hat of MS4 Coordinator appointed by the county commissioners to run our MS4 permit program to satisfy all of our mandated clean water MCMs for the state of Indiana. So, this program has been in existence since 2003. It was our first permit cycle. As you may or may not remember, the county has chosen since that date to periodically fund the MS, or MS4 Phase Two program out of the EDIT funds. And so, it's been a couple, two or three years since that has taken place. And so, I'm here before you today requesting money to be placed into the program so we continue, so we can continue to operate. Happy to answer any other questions, thank you.
Any questions from council?
Has there been any movement towards the ERUs?
Well, so, yeah, real quick on that, John. So, there are seven local entities here in Tivicoon County that partnered and we are co-permites under one MS4 permit. The county is the only entity out of the seven who has not passed a stormwater utility program, which is the ERU John's talking about. And for those who don't know, ERU is an acronym that stands for Equivalent Residential Unit, I believe. So, what that basically boils down to, boots on the ground, is that, believe it or not, all of the houses within a certain geographical area are measured and the average of those, the square foot average of those houses are taken. And that's how we derive or calculate the, the ERU that John just mentioned. So, yes, John, back in 2000, it was actually slightly after I became county surveyor, so it was, it would have been finished in about 2012. But immediately after I became county surveyor in 2010, the Drainage Board, which is the county commissioners, requested that I conduct a study and put together a report to basically describe what the county ERU would be and also what the money would be used for. And so, I do have that report, John, we did finish that. It is in my office. And after I finished it, it was decided at the time collectively that we would not pursue it, but I would be happy to drag it out and refresh it and, and, and bring it back to the table if, if I'm so directed, so... I think that answers the question.
Yeah, that was so much a square foot or something like that.
Yeah, I don't remember what the counties, well, I think this, uh...
The county was thirty-eight.
You probably know the city west a lot better than I do by saying it was around eight and Lafayette's around three, four, five, somewhere around there. If I remember right, I think the county's...
It was a little higher.
It was about, no, it was about three to five, I believe, is what the report indicates. But I, I can look at that and give you the exact number.
I don't want to even remember it.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay.
I just wanted to know if it was still around.
It is.
Any other questions or comments from council? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have additional appropriation for the Health Department.
Make a motion, we approve additional appropriation for Health Department Donation Fund 4118 in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the additional appropriation for Health Department Donation Fund of 4118 in the amount of one thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. Discussion?
These are donations that they received for, uh...
Yeah, it's actually, yeah, nine hundred and eighty.
There's two papers, yeah, combined.
Total of twelve seventy-six, I guess.
Yep, so, two separate donations for the community baby shower event that they, they held recently.
Yes.
That's what the, that's what these donations for.
Right. Any other discussion? Does that make sense, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. If there is no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have additional appropriation for Cary Home.
Make a motion, we approve the Francis Powers Trust Fund 5950 in the amount of one thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the Francis Powers Trust Fund 5950 appropriation in the amount of seventeen hundred dollars. Discussion?
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, this fund is a seventy thousand dollar amount that is invested over and over and over with the specification that the interest is to be used for recreational activities for our residents at Cary Home. So, we're just asking to appropriate the cash balance that's in there that is strictly all interest so that our kids can go out into the community and, and experience recreational activities.
Is this amount seventeen hundred, is that quarterly or annually?
Um, so, we get a lump sum, I'm going to look at Jennifer, annually and then there's just a tiny amount of interest monthly as well.
Okay, any other questions from council? Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved, thank you. Next, we have County Sheriff of the Surtax Fund 4805 appropriation.
Mr. President, I would move that we would place 4805 for the gasoline and oil increase from the County Highway Department.
Second?
Four hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Do you want to do both of them at the same time, John? There's also two hundred and fifty from that account as well.
Okay, and then also from the same fund, 4805, the engineering and architect to cover reimbursements of roadway design services for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second? Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the additional appropriation from the County Surtax Fund 4805 in the amounts stated. Discussion?
Thank you. All seven of these next items, just real quick. The majority of it has to do with just rolling funds back from the state. So far, we've got four major roads, six major bridges, all federally funded. So, we pay lion, we pay full amount, then we get lion's share back. So far this year, we've gotten three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars back, jumps into the jet, into our funds, but it's not spendable until we appropriate. And then, most of this money that we're appropriating is coming back, plus the money that we're appropriating for these roads and bridges will then again be reimbursed and cycle through that same thing. A lot of the other expenses here, mostly, all the other expenses have to do with increased material costs for asphalt fuel, et cetera, and an increased preservation workload, just more and more roads to take care of and a particularly big load this year. So, that speaks to everything.
Okay. So, that's kind of the broad overview then?
That's kind of broad overview of where the money's going.
Okay. Any other questions from council? So, we've got a whole series of them that we'll be doing after these. So, any other discussion about these two particular? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have Local Road and Street.
Mr. President, I would move that we place 1169 Fund on the table for maintenance and streets and materials for an amount of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the increased cost for preservation services.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the additional appropriation from Fund 1169, Local Road and Street, in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have MVH Fund 1173 appropriation.
Mr. President, I would move that we place the Fund 1173 for construction, streets and materials, again, for the increase of asphalt material prices and increased preservation requirements for the amount of five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Second? I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the MVH Restricted Fund 1173 appropriation in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that is approved. Next, we have MVH 1176 appropriation.
Mr. President, I would move that we place the Fund 1176 on the table for dues and subscription, to cover dues and subscription, price increase for fifty bucks.
50,000.
It should be 50 bucks.
Should be.
That's a lot of money for, for $50,000.
Terry, did you second that?
I will.
It's when he's done pontificating.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Got a bad eye.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional appropriation from MVH Fund 1176 in the amount of $50,000. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I knew you wouldn't like that one.
That is approved. Next, we have Cune Bridge Fund 1135 appropriation in the amount of 550,000.
Mr. President, I would move that we place Fund 1135 for engineering and architectural work to cover reimbursement, bridge, design services, and MBIS inventory for the amount of $550,000.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the additional appropriation from Cune Bridge Fund 1135 in the amount of $550,000. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. And while you're up here, we have a reduction.
Oh, yeah. Let's redo.
Okay.
250,000, this is coming out of construction into design.
Mr. President, I would move that we, out of Fund 1135, we do a reduction on bridges to cover the reimbursement, bridge, design services, NBIS inventory, a reduction of an amount of $250,000. Reduction.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Basham, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the appropriation reduction for Cune Bridge Fund 1135 in the amount of $250,000. Discussion.
And this is just because if you see the middle part of the number, it's a different department, so that's why. We can't transfer between departments, so.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. There's no other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Except 50 for software sound better than.
All right. Thank you. Next up, we have committee reports. Any committee reports to share? You want to cover the sheriff commissary?
Yeah, I had sent out the commissary report earlier. We didn't put it in the packages because of the size and everything. I do have a couple copies, if anybody wants to see that. But I think, and Doug can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the council is just to accept this report, that I don't think you have to act on it, if I remember right.
Yeah, that's correct. The sheriff's just supposed to present it to you, and you don't have to take action on it.
Okay. So that's informational purposes only. So obviously, we have budget hearings coming up, so if you haven't already started your process of meeting with departments, please do so soon. And our November council meeting, as a reminder, is to be held on the 15th, not the 8th. So any new business that we need this morning or other, I guess I covered kind of the line items there. Unfinished business? Commissioner FYI, Commissioner Byers.
Really not much to say. The two construction projects are moving along greatly, so they are looking like they're going to be on time and such. I do know, I heard Ben Murray's having a cook out here pretty soon because he has one a quarter beef, so we're all going to be invited to his place, and I think it's a county-wide invite, so. Didn't want everybody to know on that part of it. But no, everything's going good, and look, do your homework, study your department heads, and good luck to all.
Do you want to introduce our new extension director?
Well, I think she might want to do it herself. You haven't met Dee. Dee has now been promoted or demoted or whatever to the head boss of their extension service out there at our fair, or out at the extension office, so congratulations to Dee. I said congratulations or condolences, so she doesn't.
Whichever way.
So, but yes, congratulations to Dee on that part of it.
Okay.
And if any of you are going down to State Fair this week, we'll be down there from Wednesday to Sunday, so you're more welcome to get a milkshake with me.
All right. Thank you. Dave, any public comment for us this morning? If there is no public comment, do I have the last motion?
I'll make, no, you go ahead. Second.
We are adjourned. We're going to argue over who gets to make the last.